This meeting to order. Before we get started, today is 9/11. And if you're like me, you've been hearing about things all day long. So I would like to invite everyone to stand and join us in a moment of silence before the pledge, if you are so inclined. Thank you. Okay, on behalf of the Board, I welcome all members of the audience to this evening's meeting. This meeting is a working session of the Board to conduct the business of the district. The agenda for today's meeting has been published, and the agenda items to be discussed and/or voted on have been studied by the Board members. I'd like to introduce the people participating in this meeting. Recording Secretary Peggy King, Superintendent Mr. Michael Tully, Board members Amy Cast, Bob Swain, Sandy Hayes, and David Cogan. I'm Jackie McGurty, and I currently serve as President of the Board. An agenda for this meeting is available online at boarddocs.com, and copies are also located on the table at the back of the boardroom. There will be an opportunity for both virtual and in-person public comments to be shared during the association and public comment portion of the meeting. Community members who are interested in viewing the meeting with closed captions are encouraged to follow the link on our website to the district's YouTube channel. The YouTube stream includes closed captioning for both regular board meetings and study sessions. Visit nsd.org, and under our district, click School Board, then Board Meeting Materials and Videos. If you are here to address the Board on Agenda Items, please sign in using the sign-in sheet on the table at the back of the room, and take a number which corresponds with the line where you signed in. First order of business is land acknowledgement, and this evening, I believe it is Director Cast.
Thank you, President McGurty, my honor. We take this time to acknowledge that the North Shore School District occupies the unceded coast salish lands that have been here since time immemorial. We honor the ways of knowing and ways of being of indigenous peoples and tribal nations who are still here and thriving in our district community. We also acknowledge that this is a working land acknowledgement that will continue to evolve as our partnership with local indigenous peoples and tribal leaders expands.
Thank you, Director Cast. Next on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as published?
Moved.
Second. Any discussion? Okay, in which case I will call for the vote. And the agenda is passed unanimously. Thank you. Next on the agenda is the superintendent's report. Mr. Tully?
Thank you, President McGurty. As you know, last week, we began a new school year. I would like to take this opportunity to offer a very sincere thank you to each of our support staff members, our educators, our administrators, for all the hard work and preparation that went into making sure everything was ready for the start of this school year. As a result of everyone's efforts, we've had a very smooth and successful beginning to the 23-24 school year. On the first day of school last week, Wednesday, I started the day at the Transportation Center at 6:00 a.m., welcoming in bus drivers and waving them out of the bus lot. And then I was able to visit six schools briefly on that day. I went to Timbercrest Middle School, East Ridge, Cottage Lake, Sunrise, Woodin, and Woodenville High Schools. So I look forward to conducting formal school visits to all of our schools throughout this school year. That concludes my superintendent's report for this evening.
What a busy week it was. Thank you. Next on the agenda is association and public comment. The North Shore School District Board of Directors has set aside a period of up to 60 minutes to receive updates and comments from association leaders and community members. The Board expects all parties addressing the Board to present their comments in a way that is civil and respectful. Please speak directly to the Board and address matters related to district operations, policies, procedures, and agenda items under consideration by the Board. Comments should not make reference to any employee or representative of the district by name or by identifiable reference. There is a complaint process available through the office of the superintendent, if interested. Washington state law requires that only items on a previously published agenda be discussed at a board meeting. Any new topics brought up during public comment will either receive a later response from a district employee or a board member, or be discussed at a future board meeting. Do we have any association leaders present?
Thank you. Hi, I'm Holly Munchow.
And I'm Tara Droni. Good afternoon.
And we're here on behalf of the NSD Council PTSA. We are co-VPs of advocacy.
And I know we have a lot of events on the calendar, but we won't spend all of the time tonight going through all of them. I just wanted to start first by letting everyone know that the council has their first general membership meeting, and that date is September 22nd, or no, wrong date. Sorry, let me repeat. The September 13th.
Eighteenth.
Eighteenth. Oh, my gosh. Okay. At 7:00 p.m. And there's the calendar on the North Shore Council PTSA website that has a lot more of the activities that the council will be doing, as well as how to register for the meeting and the Zoom links and all that good stuff. And the next thing I'd like to announce is that there is a meeting for the North Shore Special Education Community PTSA, and the charter meeting will be on September 22nd at noon, online. And the information to register for that event will be available through Eventbrite, and that link will be on the website at nsecptsa.org. We're just really excited that we are finally at that point to have that, and we have over 60 charter members at this point. So we're just looking forward to who can show up to the meeting and make it all official.
And then the next event we wanted to mention is going to be here in this room on October 3rd. We have invited all the school board candidates to come have a little Q&amp;A from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. And then the final event we wanted to mention to get people out and planning is the weekend of October 21st and 22nd. We have Legislative Assembly. Registration is up and ready to go. And a reminder that the top five priorities that the Washington State PTA has identified that we'll be sort of drilling down on and identifying how to address are addressing the student mental health crisis, addressing critical gaps in education funding, preventing and reducing gun violence and suicide, addressing funding, inclusion, and supports in special education, and building and maintaining safer school facilities. So if you care about all those things and want to take them up with Wash State Legislature, it would be great to have you register and join us. So hopefully, we'll partner on some of those, too. Thank you.
I'm sorry, Holly, I was writing, what's the date again of Legislative Assembly?
October 21st and 22nd. And the registration is up on the Washington State PTA website. It's open now. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the information. Those are going to be fabulous events. Okay. Next is public comment, unless we have other association leaders? Okay, and we just have one public comment tonight. If you would come forward to the podium and introduce yourself and provide your comment, please.
Can I go over to that slide? Is that okay?
Oh, sure. Yeah. Can we get her hooked up? Okay. Yeah? Oh, way ahead of me. Thank you.
Do you mind, President McGurty, if I scooch over?
Please, please. So she can see.
And over the summer, I conducted a research report on elementary students and their attitudes towards computers, computer science specifically. So for this research report, I did a study, and 106 kids did this survey, 53 girls and 53 boys, through a means of mostly in-person communication at local parks, specifically a lot of them in the North Shore School District, which is why I'm bringing it here to talk to you about. And so some of my results is I focused on four main factors, which was computer science work aspirations, which is what kids, you know, maybe thought about pursuing computer science in the future, as well as appreciating computer science, which is how much they value computer science in their everyday life, and then also their engagement in computer science, so how often they're getting to actually code and do computer science. And then finally, their parental attitudes and values towards computer science, which was actually a separate part of the survey that the parents answered. So the results of this research was that through running a manual U test, there were three factors that had statistically significant differences between the males and females and their thoughts towards these different factors, where males scored higher than females in all three of these categories. So the first category was future computer science workers. So boys thought they would maybe pursue that more than girls, as well as appreciating computer science, boys scored higher in that. And then finally, in computer science engagement, boys also scored higher. The only result that did not have any statistically significant differences was the parental attitudes and values. So what the importance behind this is another question that was asked was, I get to learn coding often. And this was asked to all students, and they could respond with a Likert scale from strongly agree all the way down to strongly disagree. And of this question, 60, around 65% of the kids responded either disagree or strongly disagree to saying that they get to learn coding often, which is really important because it's something that, you know, the more that they get to do, the more that their interests in different things are going to progress, which kind of leads to how to boost engagement in computer science, as that was one of the factors that had the greatest effect size in our area and made the biggest effect of what kids thought towards computer science. So 33% of the kids said that they had not ever coded in school. And this is really important because the more kids get to code, it really can help them boost their confidence, as well as their motivation to continue to pursue coding and kind of change any types of stereotypes or misconceptions that they might have towards coding, which is especially important for those females and those girls who maybe that could cause, maybe that was some of the reason of why that gap was happening between the girls and boys. And this motivation will just ultimately lead them to take more STEM classes as they kind of go into those higher level classes in high school and beyond. So the solution to this, and what I want to do as my next steps to this, is I want to start the computer science clubs in the local elementary schools. I personally went to Kokanee, so I think that's where I'll probably start. But it's really important that we go to the elementary schools, have a club where kids can kind of just come and get to learn coding. I can kind of teach them a little bit, as I've taken a lot of computer science classes as well, and it's something I'm really passionate about. And this will just kind of help continue to build the representation and build like a new types of stereotype of how they see computer science. And just more coding is just going to lead to more opportunities for all of the kids. So thank you so much for your time. You can't really see the last slide, but it had a QR code that just leads to my full written report that kind of has a lot more information about some other literature and different types of studies that also kind of go along with this, as well as more data and more information, just discussions about the implications behind all this research. So thank you so much. I really appreciate that.
Thank you so very much, Lizzie. That's great. We didn't get to see your slides today, but perhaps you could send them to us? Perfect. Thank you.
Oh, excellent.
Any other public comments? Okay. Next item on the agenda then is the adoption of the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as published? So moved. Second. Is there any discussion? Okay, in which case I'll call for the vote. Okay, that the consent agenda has been adopted. Thank you. Next up is action items. We have one, which is project acceptance over $1 million. Superintendent Tully?
Thank you, President McGurty. There was one project over $1 million completed in this reporting period, and that was the tennis courts at Skyview Middle School. Final contract amount was $1,154,000. We recommend that the school board accept this project as complete.
Thank you. Any questions? Discussion? Okay, in which case do I?
Nope, nope.
I hear a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second. Okay, then I'll call for the vote.
We see those tennis courts being used often, so it's great to have that work.
And that is approved unanimously. Thank you. Next up is performance reviews. This time, we have the monitoring report for Superintendent, Parameter Three, District Staff. Superintendent Tully?
Thank you, President McGurty. This, of course, is the parameter that addresses school district staff. As of this evening, I believe that the information in the report is correct and that I am in compliance with this parameter. I would like to thank Assistant Superintendent Dr. Obadiah Dunham, who oversaw the, currently oversees the HR Department, our Human Resources Department, and who compiled, helped compile all of this information, along with, of course, the entire Human Resources Department team that have done a tremendous amount of work to support our staff in so many ways over the past few years. I know that you've had an opportunity to review and study the report, and so we are prepared to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any questions or discussion from the Board?
I will kick us off. Thank you, Superintendent Tully. I appreciate the comprehensive nature of this report. It was just within the last year or so that we've been able to start tracking retention data, and it turned out this is really critical as we recover from the pandemic. One of the impacts, obviously, is our retention rate. But before I kind of have some thoughts, I wanted to start with some questions, if I could. So I think the first one, I want to go in order here to make sure it is logical. First of all, under Number Two, which is create and monitor human resource policies and procedures, Number B, there's a new program that was, that was talked about under selecting the most qualified and best suited candidates, talking about a training for interviewer teams related to equity diversity and implicit bias. And then the last bullet under that, too, was utilize the revised diversity equity statement in hiring process. So again, getting to that intersection with our equity process, equity policy about hiring and retaining diverse staff that reflects our community. Just would like to understand just even high level about how the process was adjusted as we continue to try to do that work.
Yes, so I'm going to ask our Assistant Sup, Dr. Obadiah Dunham, to come up to speak to this. But what we ensure is that each time we convene an interview team, there is a review of certain documents. And in fact, we ask that they read over and sign certain documents that they've read regarding this particular topic. But I will allow our Dr. Dunham to provide any more detailed information.
Thank you.
All right, so I think a couple of things. One is, we have a video that we've created in collaboration with the Racial and Educational Justice Department that overgoes, looks over implicit bias and how, so it just kind of takes you through the process. It borrows from YouTube, as well as some of our own kind of people's knowledge, and we show it to the interview team prior to the interview. And we ask that the schools do the same thing, show it to the provider interview, so just kind of check what you might think when somebody comes in and what you might perceive about somebody versus, are you really looking for the best, most qualified candidate for position? And then, as Superintendent Tully said, we have a form that we have everybody sign that talks about implicit bias, has Mr. Tully's name at the bottom of the form, and just kind of his statement around making sure that we're looking for the, again, the most qualified candidate versus things, terms we might have used left in the past that could have introduced implicit bias, like best fit or something like that. And every candidate has to, or every interviewer has to read it and sign it before we engage in the interview process.
That's super helpful. Thank you. Yeah, that's a great evolution of the work, for sure, for sure. And then under Two as well, I'm going to skip over the retention data for a sec, and talk about get all the way to E, where it talks about including in an effective personnel performance evaluation system tied to the district goal policies. So it would be helpful to understand, this kind of brings the students into the mix when you're talking about doing the evaluation system. So I was wondering if there might be some examples of how student outcomes vis-à-vis the goals policy, of course, right, is brought into and plays a part in the performance evaluation system?
Yes, we do cite a couple of examples under that particular 2E section. Primarily, it's regarding our staff evaluation, our educators and our administrators. Within that system, we do have an expectation for student growth identified as part of the evaluation, and then giving documentation in terms of their progress on that during the evaluation process. That's both within the AWSP tool that we use for administrators, as well as the Danielson framework that we use for our teachers. But I did ask Tracy Malloy, Dr. Malloy, to come forward to share any additional information regarding that topic.
Very helpful. Thank you.
Good afternoon, and forgive me, I brought some notes. So as Superintendent Tully alluded to, every educator who is evaluated using the Association of Washington Schools Principals Leadership Framework, which would be our principals and assistant principals, each one of them is responsible for developing student growth goals. And all certificated teachers who are evaluated using the Danielson Framework for Teaching Framework, that's mostly our classroom teachers, are expected to develop student growth goals annually. When we think about the student growth goals that the principals and assistant principals develop, those are embedded in the strategic action plans for each school building. And each strategic action plan identifies at least one, if not more, of the goals in our strategic plan as a part of their school's focused work. So in any school's strategic action plan, you will find Goal Three highlighted, you will find perhaps Goal One and Two highlighted this year for elementaries, you'll find Goals Three, Four, and Five, or Goals Two, Three, and Five for our secondary schools highlighted. And embedded within the strategic action plan actions, the principals and their SDLTs are looking at specific groups of students for whom the work that they're going to do is going to be impacted. So this year, we have talked to all of our leaders about the importance of being sure to identify a small group of students that are considered to be furthest from racial and educational justice, and develop all of their strategies and practices in their strategic action plan for that group of students. Right now, we know that in many schools, that group of students is our students identifying Hispanic and Latino. Each year, when principals are evaluated, they are asked to report about the work that they have done in their strategic action plans. And so how that, what that does is it asks them to report about the progress of that particular group of students that they have identified as the ones needing the most support in their buildings. And that information is included in their evaluation, as is just information in general about the work that they've done on their strategic action plan. When it comes to classroom teachers, classroom teachers are expected to identify student growth goals for any one of the three criterion in the state evaluative criteria that are connected with student growth. The student growth criterion are Criterion Three, which is about differentiation of instruction, Criterion Six, which is about the assessment of student progress, and Criterion Eight, which is around professional practice. If a teacher is on a comprehensive evaluation, they must identify student growth goals for all three of those criterion. If a teacher's on a focused evaluation, they have to choose at least one of those two, or at least one of those three criterion for their student growth work. When a teacher identifies a student growth goal, they are then identifying an area of their content curriculum that they know is a really important aspect of the course that they teach or the content that they teach. And they are looking at the work that students have already demonstrated they can do before they establish their student growth goals, and then they select the amount of growth that they're going to expect to see students engage in. Teachers are not only responsible for reporting about the fact that they are establishing student growth goals, but they also then must monitor the students' progress toward the goals, and then report to their evaluator what the work has resulted in, what kind of growth have they seen in the group of students in their class or in their small group, which is a part of the student growth effort. So that is connected to teachers' evaluation, because if a teacher is on a comprehensive evaluation, they are scored for every one of the eight evaluative criteria. So they're scored for those student growth criterion. And then in addition to that, there's also a student growth factor that is the result of the work that they've done to establish and monitor progress toward their student growth goals. So lots and lots of evaluation connected to student outcomes in both the strategic action plans for schools, and then also in the evaluation of both certificated principals, assistant principals, and teachers. I would also be remiss not to call out the fact that we have not only strategic action plans for each one of our schools, but each one of our major departments in the school district is also responsible for strategic action plans that are specific to the department and the work of the department. And over the last couple of years, we've worked really hard on making sure that each one of the department's strategic action plan calls out ways in which the department's key efforts is actually going to be impacting the outcome of students in the work that happens. The cabinet members that are responsible for each one of the department leaders has their evaluation connected to the strategic action plan for the work that their departments do, and we also reflect the ways in which our department leaders are engaging in the work in their evaluations as well. Does that answer your question?
It does. Thank you. And I don't, I don't think I saw you looking at your notes. Just, I don't think so. Thank you so much, Dr. Malloy. I mean, that, I know it's, this is a, I think, 20-page document. It must be very hard to decide what work to include and what not. That's a, I would just ask going forward, I think that's incredible work, that's helpful for us to track.
Yes.
So just maybe next time, have that in there. But yes, and not looking at our notes at all. That was, that was awesome. Thank you so much. So those were my questions, and now, just to make it easier, I'm going to go ahead and segue into my reflections on this. As I mentioned, I think it's a very comprehensive report. The information, first of all, on retention is very helpful and critical. Obviously, the Board doesn't impact retention directly, and yet, we want to create the conditions for it. And so understanding how the system is doing is really helpful for us, for our own work, as well as checking on the monitoring of the superintendent's work as well. So thank you, because going forward, I found as I was going through this, there's a lot of evidence, and I could go through it, but I do want to give my colleagues time to chat. But we are doing great work. What I found myself wondering about was some of the impacts of the work, so that again, as we, the Board... So that, again, as, as we, the board, are hoping to get a really good understanding of the impact of all the work as we might have to make some, some decisions in the coming months, you know, understanding where the, the impact, where the work has impacted students, not the most, but has had an impact on students would really be helpful for us. And also, I think, just to have a conversation up here, just to really help support work that is having, is having the impact, as well as understanding the context. So thank you for, I, there's, is a lot of evidence of new work. The civility policy, I think, is going to have a great impact on the work. The work on retaining especially our diverse workforce, I think, is really critical and the great evidence of bouncing back, especially amongst classified staff. Still work to go to get back to pre-pandemic retention. And I'm wondering, I don't know if any other districts track retention like this. It'd be interesting to understand how other school districts are doing with retention. I know it's a concern across the country, school districts. And so, it would be interesting to understand strategies and how that's playing out. But I, it looks like lots of work is getting done there as well. And then, as well as also, the, I was really looking forward to seeing the report on, on number four, on training for staff members to perform their duties, as the professional development aspect we talked about in our board retreat. And there's lots of evidence there, which was helpful. And the fact that it's a multimodal professional development as well was very helpful. So thank you, Superintendent Tully. I appreciate the, the report and all the work everyone's doing.
Thank you.
Thank you, Director Cast. Other comments, questions?
I'd like to add on, we have 14 parameters, and they're all important, but I'm not sure they're equally impactful in how we achieve our goals and the strategic plan. And I think this one in particular is one of those metrics that really makes the difference. We're sure it's been a strong district for a long time because of the quality of the environment, the place to work for staff. People continue to work here and have long careers here. I think that's really helped make a big difference on our successes. And so, to read this report and see all the focus that we're doing to support our staff, create a positive work environment, provide the appropriate definitions of the job descriptions and the training, really support our staff to help them do this very difficult work. As any parent knows, working with children isn't always the most easy thing to do. So I appreciate that Superintendent Tully has stepped in and carried this work forward and continued to make this a good place to be, an employee. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Director Hayes?
Yeah, I'll just echo what my colleagues have said in the impact of this. And also, this is an area where board members can wildly get out of their lane in getting involved with individual employees and, and what's going on. And by having this parameter showing that the system is working and where it's working keeps us where we belong of making sure that the system is doing what it's supposed to and not trying to problem solve it at an individual level. So it, I know it's a lot of work, but it's really important that we understand what's working and then where things need improvement. So thank you for the robust work. And again, echo the, the great work in terms of diversity of staff that's been done. I had two questions, one along that line of retention. Certainly, very increasing percentage as our overall staff numbers have gone down. The number of very highly qualified staff that are staff members of color have stayed, and that's wonderful. I am curious about recruitment work. I know it's a little clear on where to do that recruitment work for our Black staff members, but there is more struggle around how to find Hispanic and Asian staff members, and that is a demographic that is definitely in need of seeing that reflection in our staff. So I'm curious if there's new ideas, new thinking around how to find Hispanic and Asian staff, particularly administrators?
I personally haven't had that conversation specifically with, with staff. We do participate, of course, as noted in the report, in the job fairs and activities like that. We have in years past also gone out of state recruiting. But that, outside of that, we haven't done anything most, other than that, most recently.
Yeah, and so I'll just say it out loud. I knew that going to our HB, I got the, thank you, CU, I got the letters backwards, was a very effective way of finding Black educators. But there has been, it's not just North Shore, obviously, it's across the country of trying to find resources. And so I didn't know if there were any new ideas of recruiting. Okay, so more to come on that. And then, my second question, just again, because it talked about volunteers. I know that our volunteers in the classroom, because that's, that 2B, wherever it was, talked about that, and it, it's, sorry, it's 2A. It has not bounced back to what it was pre-pandemic, and I didn't know whether there were still concerns about having parents in, adding another body into the classroom, why that hasn't bounced back up and, and making sure because new staff come in. It is a lot of work at the beginning to set up a classroom for volunteers. And so, want to make sure we don't lose too many years of teachers engaging in that practice.
No, I think we absolutely appreciate the support of volunteers coming in, and we do everything we can to support them going through the process so they can be in our classrooms. I think we, this year, you know, on average, around 10,000 volunteers are processed through our system so they can be in within our schools. So I think that's, that, that work continues. And definitely want to utilize our support now of our Family Engagement Resource Center to bring even more support within to our buildings.
Great. Thank you.
I'm sure, there's not a whole lot I can add to it. It's already been said, and the work's amazing, and it's been being done at all levels. The only question I had, other than what's been thrown out there, was under, just on the retention side of things, there's a category, is this called resignations? So it'd be interesting to see maybe more in-depth data, especially on like retention of, of new teachers, you know, first-time teachers coming in. Just to, I'm sure you have the data, but it'd be curious for the board to see, are we having any issues with new teacher retention or not? Or are there certain, certain seniority, are we losing teachers or not at, you know, year 10 or year eight or things like that? If there's any notable data points that we should be aware of, it'd be good to see that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you all. And I will echo my, my colleagues' comments as well. Some, some of my questions have been answered already, but just to wax a little bit. First, for me, particularly in, in section number one, I personally think you were a little, you know, off the bat with respect to missing the fact that you lead by example. You all lead by example in creating the kind of environment where people want to come to this district to work. In treating your staff with dignity, listening, making time, working to resolve issues, that's, I think, clear to, to all of us, and that isn't captured in number one. It is a little bit later in, I think, 2D with respect to responding with empathy and providing Washington CAREs programs and so forth. But I think that, that should be upfront there. And then, you also encourage, in, in section D, the fact that you encourage challenging every student and lead with the expectation that teachers will challenge every student and see every student as being able to meet those challenges. In number two, it kind of felt like they're, similar to Director Cast, I felt like there needed to be a tieback to the HR policies and procedures. And I'll ask about this in our next section when we talk about the policy itself. But let me scroll back to the top here. And hopefully not, no, I went right through it. Hang on. It says, number two says, create and monitor human resource policies and procedures that. And then goes on to list the, and I appreciate, everything that's in here is absolutely relevant, and I really appreciate Dr. Malloy's further information. That was something I was hoping to, to get as well. And, you know, I agree, should be included in this kind of a report. But I think it also would be helpful if we're talking about creating and monitoring the policies and procedures, procedures to refer back to those relevant policies and procedures that are addressed by, by the data here. And also has been stated in 2C with the, the tables, that COVID clearly impacted our turnover and certainly depletion of the pool of available candidates. I do think we are recovering from it. And I too, my question was with respect to, how do we compare to our neighboring districts or similar districts if, if they collect that, you know, similar data? And again, we're clearly a little worse off in classified staff. So it'd be interesting to see if anyone has thoughts on, on why with that. And I could come up with any number of reasons. But then, I forget which section it is, but with respect to hiring the best and most qualified staff, I'm always impressed with everyone's diligence in doing just that. But would be interested to see the retention rate as a function of demographic group, if it's statistically reasonable to, to try to generate that kind of, kind of data. I mean, we could probably look at the data and calculate it ourselves, but I'm sure Dr. Foster would be much better at it. And that's all I had. Is there was anything else? Okay, in which case, back to our agenda, do I hear a motion? Hang on, hang on, let me get it. Our options for parameter three are to find that the superintendent is in compliance, making adequate progress toward compliance or not in compliance. Do I hear a motion?
First of all, I'd like to make a motion to find the Superintendent Tully in compliance with Policy P3 district staff.
Second. Thank you. Any further comments or discussion? Okay, in which case, I call for the vote. And that passes unanimously. Thank you. Everyone will take a few moments to fill out our report sheets here. I think pins are down. So next item on the agenda is policy review. Review of Superintendent Parameter Three District Staff. Does anyone else on the board have any comments or suggestions about Policy Three, P3?
I have a thought, maybe two. But the first thought is, you know, again, thinking about how this is in alignment and supports a lot of the work of our racial and educational justice policy. I don't see much equity in here. And specifically, within point one, creating a work environment, or point three, recruiting, developing, and retaining top-quality staff members. And I'm, I'm wondering if that isn't, I don't want to be duplicative, right? But I wonder if that isn't something that we should call out. I find that, I would think this board's intention is to foster a working environment that does, that does honor and support an inclusive environment for staff members. And I just was pulling up our equity policy to see whether or not we should pull it over or not. But I would appreciate people's thoughts on that. And then, the other one is, under number two, 2E, again, that idea about the performance evaluation system, if tying it to the strategic plan goals is adequate with that language, or if we should, again, add student outcomes into, student growth outcomes into that as well. But first of all, I just would appreciate what people think about adding, creating, creating a supportive environment from an equity perspective.
So I have a puzzled face, because I thought at our July board meeting, we had a conversation about having a retreat or study session where we were going to do a deep dive into all of our parameters and do exactly this type of work. And so, if that's going to happen, I'm wondering if that might be the place to have this conversation? And if that's not going to happen, then, anyway, that's, I just, I have that memory of having that conversation, and I'm wondering what happened to that? And then, is that where we have this type of conversation? That hence the puzzled face.
I think that's, that's next that I do. My memory won't pull that back all the way to July. But we are looking for study session topics, if that would be an appropriate study session. Am I dreaming? Didn't we have that conversation about setting a time to go through?
I'm sure we did.
And, and/or doing it as we went through the policy reviews during the year. I remember discussing both, but not landing on one.
Okay, I thought we had landed, that, and inviting school or member candidate so they could see it, because it had been six years since we'd really dealt into these. So, anyway, that hence my puzzled face.
Since you bring it up, we were also going to be looking at, what's the term? Environmental awareness to also embed in our policy sustainability.
Yeah, yeah, so I've got all sorts of stuff for that. And I was waiting for this theoretical time. But if, again, if it's not happening, then, yeah.
Well, and it's on, this is on the agenda for tonight, so, which is a good time to bring it up.
Yep.
I mean, one question that I have relevant to that is, do we necessarily want to duplicate what may already be in our equity policy? If it's referencing certainly very specific, then this would be an important one to reference. Just keep them focused on the basic parameter that they are. And if the equity policy is sort of covering everything, whether or not that would actually carry through and, you know, that it would really be called out and made aware of during the review of each individual parameter is debatable, I suppose. But do we want to set a study session to go through all of the parameters? Or is it worth modifying each of them as we go along during the year?
We remember the conversation, and again, clearly, it's muddied, was that it had been six years, and, and some board members were not there when we wrote these, and that perhaps it was time to really do that big picture, deep dive. I'm now cliching away here. And that would be an excellent place to take our equity policy and hold it up to all of the parameters and say, is it reflective? Does it match? But I think that got lost. And I, and again, if we're not going to do it, then, then we have to do when they come up. So that's real, I think that's my starter question, is, is there an intention to do this work? Because if we are piecemealing it as we go, and then- work? Because if we are piecemealing it as we go, and then do the big dive into all of them, anyway, that's, I'm going to stop.
So how about this? I don't, we don't have, are there retreats on here? Peggy? They are. I don't see one coming up in the next month or so. We do have a study session on October 9th that is open, but October 23rd is the P9 equity. But that's, it's P9.
Well, yeah, I mean, maybe we need to talk about the process, because to do it, it would take a serious retreat. It would be much longer than a study session, much longer.
When is our first retreat? Next retreat, that is.
It's not.
December.
December 4th.
Thank you. There it is.
Well, then, you know, it does make sense to do it in a retreat. But so do we want to talk about, because this is a standing agenda item after every monitoring, how do we handle the policy review that we bring up for every?
Well, I think that, again, my memory of it was there was a frustration with some board members, because when they weren't there when we wrote it, and it felt like some of these, and did we need to do a much bigger than just, you know, adding a line or adding a phrase that we do with the policy review in our board meetings. So I don't think that's going away, but, okay. So, again, my understanding of the conversation was that we needed to do a bigger, larger work than, oh, we need to add a bullet point E to this policy review. We really need to kind of do the work we did when we wrote them six years ago of what is the point and what are our goals, and again, holding up our equity policy, and is it all reflective and the environmental, and really do that. And I thought I heard a board consensus that that was something we wanted to do this year.
So do I hear that, but you, but still doing policy reviews after every monitoring report? That's why I'm confused. That's why I'm not tracking.
Yeah, absolutely. But, but in, if it's going to, if this, if we're doing this, if it's going to happen in the next couple of months, do we acknowledge that there's some, we're going to add a bullet point E or do this work, and put that in with the big picture work? That was the question I'm asking, is what are we doing? Sorry.
Taking, not votes. No, I think a retreat would be a good idea, where we look at all of them and go through, you know, just like we are tonight with our Bs and Rs. I'm thinking, it's not something I think I would want to put off for very long, particularly as we have parameters ahead of us, that, again, we'd have to try to address some shortcomings in the meantime. So I'd rather get a review of everything, and then we can do readings and approval later, at a later board meeting, or even as those parameters come up. So what about, this is September, since we don't currently have a topic for the study session on October 9th, we could instead have a retreat. And what we'll have to do is then go back with perhaps two-by-twos or discussions to find out when folks are available for a meeting of that, that length, in order to get that done, and when to get it scheduled. Does that make sense?
So then what are we doing on October 9th?
What I was proposing was that if, since we don't have a study session topic, we could, instead of a study session, have a retreat on that day.
But then we're checking dates. Why?
Between now and then. Well, I mean, I don't want to speak for everyone. I don't know when anyone's schedule is for October 9th, so we'd have to go through and make sure everyone is available.
Oh, okay. Thank you. I wasn't, I wasn't tracking that. No, that's fine. Yeah. So even if we start the conversation on the 9th, I'm okay with that. I just want to understand then what are, so what, how shall we, and I apologize, I didn't realize my point would be so controversial, but, just making a suggestion. But if, so what should our parameters be around policy review until we get a chance to do all, because we won't get through them all October 9th, I guess? We'll kick it off. But then what should be our parameters going forward as we're doing policy reviews?
Yeah, and it's not controversial. I don't disagree with anything that you proposed. It just, we're all sitting on parameter changes. And I, again, I thought I had heard that we really wanted to do a bigger. And so does it make sense to continue to keep doing small changes and then undo it with a big picture work? Or, right, and again, if we don't want to do the big picture work, that's fine. But that's what I thought I heard the board wanted to do. So it has nothing to do with what you proposed. It's just a process question that I was asking.
I'm still not, okay, so process question. So, and I'm sorry to get stuck on this. But, so again, so should, the input I had about the policy, should I keep it in a list? Is that your suggestion?
That's what I've been doing, because I thought we were waiting to do this work. And so that's, again, that's my question, is what are we doing? I don't know how else to put that. What is our process here? Are we going to keep working on each individual parameter in the policy review? Well, I guess the first question is, do we want to do a big picture, look at all the parameters, and really dive into it? That's the first question. And then, you know, in the flow chart, if the answer is yes, then are we doing small edits in policy reviews until we get there or not? That was what I was trying to ask, and I apologize if I didn't ask that clearly.
How about this? In about half an hour, we're going to sit together and have a policy review. So why don't we continue that discussion and come to a conclusion with respect to policy review of the parameters at that time? Personally, I think it would be wise of us to do an annual review of them. I mean, just like we've been doing them one at a time, except overall the way that we do the Bs and the Rs. So perhaps that's something to discuss this afternoon. With respect to the, for tonight, P3 and others that we might have before we're able to meet for a more global discussion, I think your suggestion, what you've been doing is spot on. Let's bring it up, ideas that we have, make sure we're documenting that, and then when we have the global overview, we can incorporate those and go forward from there to get them approved. Lynn?
Lynn?
Perfect. Okay. So for now, Director Cast, and I apologize, what was your point about the?
It's, I'll table it. President McGordy, I'm fine.
Yes, and I also, I already mentioned my thoughts about slight rewording of heading to section two. But we'll bring that up later as well. Okay, anything else on parameter P3? All right, next on the agenda, where to go? Information items. First up is Capital Projects' Fund Allocation Report for July 2023. Superintendent Tully?
Thank you, President McGordy. This report provides additional information to the monthly Budget Status Report, which is the next item on the agenda. The fund balance allocation report shows individual capital projects by major funding source within the Capital Projects Fund. These include, of course, the 2018 capital bond, 2022 capital bond, technology levy, impact fees, and unreserved funds.
Thank you. Questions or comments?
Just one question, Ruby Bridges Balance, is that still accurate, or is that just what's left, and we're done?
So we have Executive Director Ralph coming up to answer that question.
Should get you guys a microphone for back there to pass around. Instead of running the gauntlet up here.
It is currently still accurate. We will likely be moving that deductive change order, and the remaining funds from the soft costs that we did not spend on that project, likely will move into our elementary school expansion projects, which we will be bringing that information to you. We started to have the conversation a couple of months ago, but we're still in the process of getting what those numbers look like from those teams, and what they really need to accomplish the scopes that are right for those projects. And with the current, it's an ongoing cost estimating exercises, I'm sure you can imagine. But that is likely where the bulk of that will need to go.
So is Ruby Bridges closed out as a project at this point?
It is.
So for maybe a couple?
I think we closed it out, yeah.
I thought we did, yeah.
I think you all did a month ago, I would say.
Yeah, so the 13.5 million is what we think we'll be able to move.
That's right.
To other projects. Okay, great. Good work. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Okay, next information item is District Budget Status Report for July 2023. Superintendent Tully?
Thank you, President McGordy. A copy of the July 2023 Budget Status Report is provided for the board's review. Of course, this includes information on enrollment, budget status information, general fund, capital fund, debt service fund, ASP fund, transportation vehicle fund, and staff summary information through May 31st. Everything in the budget seems to be trending as expected, and we, as we move towards the end of the year, reporting.
Okay, thank you. Questions or comments? I think it's pretty straightforward. Thank you. Next information item is the State Board of Education Minimum Basic Education Compliance for the 2023-24 school year. Superintendent Tully?
Thank you, President McGordy. This attached for the school board review is an annual State Board of Education Minimum Basic Education Requirement Compliance Form for North Shore School District for the 23-24 school year. The questionnaire and survey were submitted to SPI on August 16th in accordance with state requirements. This form gives assurance to the State Board of Education that the school district is in compliance with the minimum requirements of the Basic Education Act, as well as related requirements as determined by the State Board of Education.
Thank you. Questions, comments? There was a small question about the number of high schools. Was that resolved?
That was resolved, yes. There, the question on the report is, how many of our schools actually serve seniors? And that number is actually nine, when we consider a couple of our programs, and not just our four comprehensive high schools, but others.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next up is project acceptance under $1 million. Superintendent Tully?
Thank you, President McGordy. This is, this, four projects under $1 million have been completed during this reporting period. These projects includes the installation of cameras at Leota and Canyon Park Middle Schools, Bothell High Schools, as well as the service, I'm sorry, support services, and the adult transition program.
Thank you. Questions or comments?
Just in the promises made, promises kept category, this was part of our 2018 bond in our last round of Safety and Security Committee, this was a priority, was installing cameras. So it's nice to see that work come to fruition.
Indeed. Okay, next up, we have board reports and communications, first of which is new business. Anyone with new business to report? Okay. And then we're down to board member reports. And first up is Director Hayes.
Beginning of the school year, so I think it's my second favorite week of the year after graduation week. Got to attend Woodmore first day with first graders and through fifth graders, just a few tiers, but mostly lots of bright, shiny kids, and so excited to be heading back to school. And then I was at Inglemore for the first, the next day for their first day of their 10th, 11th, and 12th graders. Maybe not quite so bright and shiny or enthusiastic, but it was fun to be there. And I'm a little concerned about the number of physics students that don't know where their classroom is, but we'll, we'll get them there. So hopefully they won't be civil engineers in their future. Continue our meetings with state legislators. I got to meet with two in the last, since the last time we met, and good conversations, let's say, great questions, trying to gain understanding around funding issues, specifically around special ed. So they were good, good meetings, and continue to work or meet with board members from across the state. That's been my couple weeks.
Thank you. Director Kogan?
Thank you, President McGordy. On Monday, the 28th of August, I attended with the other board members, the new administrator meeting greet. I just wanted to thank the administration team for inviting our new staff members and our new staff, or staff members in new positions to stop by and get a chance to say hello. That was a lot of fun. Thank you. And then on Thursday, the 31st, we had a meeting with State Senator Davina Dewar, with Superintendent Tully, Assistant Superintendent Bergy, and Director Cast. We had a lovely conversation about the upcoming legislative session and some of the topics of interest about our schools with Senator Dewar. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Swain?
No report for me tonight.
Okay, thank you. Director Cast?
Yeah, again, segues or overlaps, so three legislator meetings, August 29th with Representative Kloba, August 31st, Representative Dewar, September 7th, Representative Springer, with support, including my colleagues, and Superintendent Tully and Deputy Superintendent Bergy, as well as got to help out on the first day of school on September 6th at Sunrise Elementary, which was lovely.
Thank you. I also attended the meet and greet that we had before our last session. On September 1st, 5th, excuse me, I met with Director Cast, reviewed draft of board priorities and targets to send to the rest of the board. And then on September 9th, I attended the, no, September 7th, attended the Wazden Networking Call, which actually I thought had uncanny relevance to our discussion of our work as a board and goals and priorities going forward. And that is my report. There are no further comments or questions. I call us adjourned.